Good afternoon and welcome to the Budget hearing Tuesday, August 9th, 2022. Welcome to everybody that's here. We're going to start off today with the City Attorney's Office. Please come forward and make your plea.
Yes, indeed. My plea. Good afternoon, City Council. Stacy Quistre, your City Attorney. It's a pleasure seeing you from this side of the dais. I'd like to start this afternoon by just kind of reviewing the City Attorney's Office briefly. I understand I have five minutes, so I'll try to be prompt. But as I think you know, as most of you know, we're essentially a functioning law firm within the city government for the city of Sioux Falls. We have ten attorneys in our office and six staff members, all of whom are excellent, excellent employees of the city and provide a lot of value. In effect, we do two types of legal work, generally speaking, as an office. That would be litigation-oriented work and transactional work. In addition, of course, there's certain advising that I would do to the council and to the mayor and chief of staff. In those two categories of litigation and transactional, the litigation work that we do has its challenges because it's unplanned, it's time-intensive, and it's unpredictable in the sense of when it arises and how it's going to progress. And I'll talk about this in a little more detail with my specific ask, but the discovery component of that is one that's a challenge that we wrestle with on a perpetual basis. And so again, I will talk about that more here in a little bit. We also engage with outside counsel, and I have a primary responsibility for ensuring that we maintain, stay on top of that. And really, it comes in two forms. It's direct contractual outside counsel that we hire, and those are contracts that come through all of you. And then we have counsel through the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance, all of which, from an engagement with outside counsel point of view, is really, really similar. So with that, to get into my budget, as the mayor once told me, my budget is primarily personnel and paper clips, and we're good on paper clips. So, all right. As I mentioned, I do believe we provide a lot of value to the city. I'm here this afternoon to, in effect, request two FTEs, two full-time employees for the City Attorney's Office. One of the things that I enjoy about my position and that I appreciate is that when it comes to personnel needs within the City Attorney's Office, I can by and large rely on the clientele, the clients, the directors within the city, because they are the ones that have an acute awareness of the needs that they have and where things may be struggling. And so with that, I do have both a request for a public safety records specialist and for a public works specialist, both of which really highlight the interdependence of not only my department with the departments, but the departments amongst each other. And to that end, I would point out that my first request would be one that resides in the public safety, in the law enforcement center, and the other one would reside in the city center. And so neither of these requests would actually live in City Hall. With the public safety records specialist request, since 2007, the city has had one legal employee within the law enforcement center, and that's Senior Assistant City Attorney Keith Allenstein. Keith has been an excellent, excellent attorney for the city of Sioux Falls. And I know, I'd like to talk about a little bit of the growth of Sioux Falls, which we all know, but I would just like to give you a little context for this specific request. And in the 15 years that Keith has supported the police department and fire, the city has grown from 148,200 people to over 200,000. And so that is the equivalent of adding the third and fourth largest cities in South Dakota to the city of Sioux Falls. So that would be a Brookings and Aberdeen. And in that time, the landscape has changed dramatically, as you are all aware, and the needs of the police department have grown dramatically as well, as have those as fire The police department itself in 2007 had 220 authorized officers, and as of today, they have 284 authorized officers, so an increase of 64. And of course, those folks need support, and we would like to provide that to them. Regarding Keith's particular work and how he spends his time, approximately 80% of Keith's time is spent on public safety records requests and thus this FTE. And what I mean by that is those are requests that come in all different forms to the law enforcement center, again, also through fire, but relate to any types of police records, video, milestone that we have, which is the city system for recording throughout the city. And it's enormously time-intensive, and it's difficult to separate the legal work and Keith's requirements from that. But one way, short of requesting an attorney, because again, I'm not making an attorney request this year, is to provide him and us the administrative support to help him reduce that, because if you imagine what the 20% of Keith's time, what's involved in that, it's astonishing. Of course, that starts with Keith advising directly Chief Toome and the leadership within the police department, but then you have all the other issues that have arisen, unfortunately, in the last several years, even greater than we have before. That would be things like protests to officer-involved shootings, evidence release issues, legislation. Keith is our primary attorney for licensing, and as we're all aware, there's a whole new aspect to licensing now that medical cannabis has been approved in the state, and alcohol licensing, of course, goes with that. And importantly, Keith is also really our sole employee responsible for providing legal training to our law enforcement personnel. That can be things like search and seizure, evidence, to consent, all of those types of things. And so I would respectfully submit to you that this request, as is my other, is a critical one. I believe Chief Toome agrees with that, and those are conversations that we had as I was trying to determine what our needs are and where the red spots, so to speak, are in our heat map. And so I appreciate your consideration on that one. Another way that I have tried to deal with the volume issues in law enforcement centers is that I've reassigned fire rescue as a department to one of our other senior assistant city attorneys, our most recent attorney hire, Catherine Schlimgen. And that's been another way to also meet their direct needs as we look to strike a balance in all of these. My second request is for a public works specialist. A lot of the needs, frankly, are similar, as we have within the law enforcement center. Litigation is a huge component of public works, as you're well aware. It's our largest department within the city, and Director Cotter, too, has stated that this is a critical need within his department. We have a relatively small footprint within that department with two attorneys and one other public works specialist. My reference to litigation earlier and the unplanned component of that and the time-intensive piece, that really is a significant challenge within the public works department because of the volume of litigation there. And I have an example for you. When I sat down with my staff to plan for this request, and it's Angie Ricketts, who is our other public works specialist, and she had pointed out to me that last year in 2021, due in large part to three substantial litigation cases, she spent October, November, December doing almost exclusively discovery related to those three lawsuits. And the reality of it is, is we can't support the two attorneys in that department, let alone the department itself, with one person. The alternative to that, as you're well aware, is we contract out for those types of services, and it's an enormous loss of efficiency, and it's an increasing cost when we have to do that, because discovery means going through our resources, our databases, our email, the Barracuda system, that sort of thing. And so we do intend to have a litigation focus in many respects for this public works specialist. On the transactional side, legal side, that's basically the non-litigation-type legal work. Our office manages, as you maybe saw on the last slide, I know I kind of skipped right by that one, but we manage 1,350 contracts a year. That's a lot of contracts, and it's an increasing volume in an increasingly complex city. I have a laundry list of things that are included in transactional work, a lot of which you are familiar with, but suffice it to say, that's really involved in drawing up and reviewing the initial contracts, researching and advising in that respect, environmental compliance, joint jurisdiction work, subdivision development agreements, and not to mention implementing and reviewing those to ensure compliance to the extent that we can, and a variety of other things, press relief drafting, internal public works departmental process coordination and things like that. So legal work can be a little tricky to quantify, but again, on the basis of where Director Cotter is and where I am on this, really appreciate your support. As I believe you're also aware, this position would be enterprise-funded, so really only have the one general fund request and then have this one. So with that, there's also, as you can see, the increase year-over-year. Again, in my bias, I would state that I think that's a very good value for the city. We do intend to work on an interim position with housing, related to housing, with planning, and that's under development, but it's in effect targeted toward the homeless challenges that we have in housing. And so we hope to have an interim employee, which is built into that number, that would just be temporary to determine whether an FTE is actually needed, but we need to capture a lot of the data as related to the housing challenges that are out there, not unlike the topics that have been discussed with the homeless task force. So with that, I would entertain any questions.
Thank you. Counsel questions? Counsel McCarron.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. City Attorney, when we look at your budget to see that we got support for the multicultural center being requested, can you spell out for us what public policy goals that helps us accomplish? Or in other words, if we don't support the multicultural center, we don't accomplish X and Y. What is that?
That's a great question. Let me start by just pointing out that that's in effect a flow-through from my office, so there really isn't a component to that that benefits my office in that respect. But the multicultural center, as you know, is a huge diversity, equity, and inclusion push within the community, and it's an important component of how the city supports that. And so, you know, the multicultural center has gone through some transitions, and we continue to watch that. But that, you know, as the budget stands, we don't have any basis for a change there. But it's really, you know, it's, the reason it resides with us is related to the Human Relations Commission and our anti-discrimination efforts, which really take two forms, you know. And again, I was on that first slide, but I think you're all familiar with, you know, the investigations that we conduct and the adjudications related to discrimination within the city. The second component to that, again, related to the multicultural center, is the outreach and the education component to help make improvements in a very, you know, timely and important area.
Other questions? Seeing none, I'll just make one general statement that will flow through all of the budgets. My concern, maybe not such specific positions, but the overall general economy that the city's going into in the future, now starting a recession, I think we're going to take a close, hard look at all the positions, see where they're necessary. But I don't doubt that you feel that you need those positions in the attorney's office, and you guys have always been very kind to me, and I appreciate that. So thank you for your presentation.
Thanks, sir.
Next up, centralized facilities.
Good afternoon, Councilors. Tom Huber with the Finance Department, who also oversee centralized facilities, here to give you a brief review of the centralized facilities internal service fund budget for next year that's proposed. It starts on page 80 of your books, but the primary mission, as outlined here on the slide, is for us to maintain, improve, and expand our centrally managed facilities. We have a significant footprint in building space, and we know that it's expensive to build and acquire new space, so we want to first make sure that we are maximizing the effectiveness and the usage of the space that we have. So in 2021, we created this internal service fund, centralized facilities fund, which receives contributions from the general funded departments, some from sales tax transfers, to then manage the facilities within this fund. It's based on cash flow of what it takes to cash flow the needs that are out there. And so, but we set aside this funding to make sure that we don't lose sight of our existing facilities, that we don't just focus on the new things that are ahead, but we're also taking care of what we have. And might be surprised to know that our average age of our facilities, I just ran the numbers, it was 45 years, and I was like, whoa, I didn't realize that, you know, we have some newer facilities, but we also have, like the building we're in and City Hall and some of our fire stations that are older buildings and become harder and harder to maintain as they age. So requires us to rethink not only how we take care of these buildings, but how we utilize these buildings, because usage changes. So this fund allows us to do just that, take a coordinated approach to partnering with our departments to take care of these buildings and make sure that they are meeting each department's needs. So we outline a few of our key focus areas, and one of our focuses has been, as we look to invest in our facilities, make sure we're efficiently and effectively using each to deliver public services, working with our department partners, looking ahead for how we're growing, and creating that positive employee and customer experience. And one of the ways that we're finding that we've been very successful in doing this is converting to a trades-focused team. We have two carpenters now, a journeyman electrician, HVAC specialist that we've added to our teams that allows us to do more with our existing resources in combination with what we end up contracting out for major building repairs. So it's allowed us to really improve upon the service that we've been able to provide. As you can see from the slide, we've taken a chopped-up office space on the first floor of City Hall and turned it into a press conference room, in a small conference room, which has created a brighter and more modern space, allows us to use technology better, and accommodates the meeting needs as the attorneys have been outgrowing the space at their end, allows them to use the existing commission room for their conference room space. We also just completed a complete refresh of the Rawning Library, which has been well-received by both customers and staff alike. The first project we did primarily with in-house resources, this project we did primarily with contracted resources. Built-in study rooms, we brightened up the entire library with energy-efficient LED lighting, we opened up the front entry, I added a drive-through drawer for drops and pickup, and improved the staff and children's area. So how we do it is with a great team. We have a team of 28 currently, so 18 on the custodial care side to take care of approximately 500,000 square foot of our space. We do contract out some facility care, but primarily done in-house. And then we have nine on our facilities management team that is responsible for maintaining the buildings, doing the improvements, and making sure that our buildings are functioning properly. Moving forward, we are requesting that one new facilities maintenance position for 2023, and this is related directly to the public safety training facility. We will also be planning for custodial positions in 2024 for this facility, recognizing that it adds a significant footprint, over 75,000 square feet, to our space that we need to manage, and some of it, which is, a significant part of it, is 24/7 with the 9/11 Center that we will also provide custodial care for. So that's what we have planned ahead for our people. They are so vital to our needs, and I can't talk highly enough of our team as you see what they do and how well they care for our facilities. Looking at our budget specifically, we do have a significant increase in the centralized facilities budget in R&amp;M and capital, but again, this is an internal service fund. We build and use balances over time, so we're using cash flow as we undertake several rather significant improvements. And that goes for both on the repair side and the capital side. And I will discuss the project that we have planned on the next slide, but one other major change to our budget is an increase for utilities. We don't know exactly where our utilities will be, as some are still in the rate-setting process, but we do plan for an increase. And one thing this fund does allow us to do is buffer the departments from the spikes in utilities or other costs, and allows this fund to absorb them and pass those costs along over time. So the other thing about some of these projects is they're long-term projects that will happen over, often over multiple years, not just a one-year project, so we budget accordingly. This is a quick review of our larger project plan, and as you can see, to the core facilities, which is City Hall, Carnegie, Town Hall, The Link, and City Center, mainly some fairly significant plumbing renovations that need to be made to City Hall eventually here as the plumbing has aged out, and then also just taking care of the building itself, sidewalks, curb and gutter. In fire, we have several larger projects coming at us, the first being a remodel of headquarters, which may be an internal team remodel project. As we look at first floor, possibly cleaning the space out and creating more space with what is there. It's in design right now, but again, looking to extend the life and use of that facility as the department has outgrown what is currently there. Also then, to fire station number nine, we have a remodel and addition. phased approach to looking at how we better utilize this campus. We have a lot of people reporting to work there. We have just a couple restrooms, way too inadequate for the needs of the department as they've grown. Also have fleet needs on that campus to shorten the deadhead time back and forth to the main shop, and also warm storage, expanding the warm storage as their fleet of vehicles continues to grow. So this will be a major undertaking as well, and we'll start design here in 2023. And lastly, to libraries, again, just keeping in mind to refresh that experience, making sure that we're placing the lighting with the new, more energy-efficient LED lighting, making the grounds improvements, and then looking at the buildings every, taking a building once every three to five years and doing a refresh of the building, creating that customer and staff experience that is much needed with these buildings as they That's a quick review of the budget. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, counsel? I see none, so I'm going to shoot one at you. In the 2023 budget, the fire headquarters remodel, has any thought ever been given to moving fire headquarters into the city center?
There have been discussions of where does fire headquarters belong? Does it belong on the main campus in the long term? But knowing that that's not the short-term option for us right now, you know, our thought is we're going to remodel this building to get some life and then look long-term as where does fire headquarters really belong, on whether it's near, closer to the LEC or part of the law enforcement campus, part of the main campus, you know, where can it ultimately end up? But no decisions have been made on that yet, and that's, you know, I would say, the five-plus year time horizon, so in the short term, you know, we'll create the space they need to get along for the next three to five years. How's that?
Thank you. I'll follow up with the chief when he comes up, too. Thank you very much for your presentation.
You're welcome.
We'll move on to public parking.
Matt Nelson, Public Parking Facilities Manager. Good afternoon. So just to touch on our purpose a little, I know we have some new counselors here, so just a reminder that we are an enterprise fund, so all of our expenses are paid with fines and fees that are collected by our department, so no general funds go in to directly support us. Consider us comparable to light, water, and sewer or landfill, so we do consider ourselves a utility that's used by the public, and our budget's managed the same way. Our scope of management includes everything in our parking system. That would be six ramps, 11 lots, and all of the on-street parking. So we do have oversight of enforcement, of leasing, and of parking meters, which is unique compared to some cities, because we have one department that does all of it. If you look at our makeup when compared to all of downtown, our parking lots that are public parking are about 30% of the total parking in our downtown area, and about 70% of that would be made up by private development. So we're a piece of the puzzle, but we are not the entire puzzle. Currently, if you look at the number of 65% leased spots, that is the end of last year, we're currently sitting at 69%, so we've seen an increase mostly due to growth. We've seen some of that post-COVID shift with people coming back to work, and then we always see a little bit of a summer bump with summer hires coming in. So what is our focus? Well, what's interesting is, sitting on the 2025 downtown plan, and now we're working on the 2035 downtown plan, the old talk was all about capacity and where we had capacity at in our system and could we grow. I remember we had taken down the river ramp, parking was tight, our occupancy rates were at 100%, sometimes above, we were oversold over 100% in a lot of locations, and now we have the capacity. And the conversation has shifted to technology, convenience, and accessibility, so people are asking for access and ease of payment and convenience options. So what does that look like for us? So we will be enhancing our LPR operation, so it's a license plate recognition technology. We currently use a license plate recognition vehicle. We've had that for about three years. We'll be upgrading that to a new vehicle in the next probably six months, and that fully integrates with all of our software from our citations to our leasing, and it will enable us to go what I would call paperless in the parking industry, so get rid of hangtags, get rid of permits that you can see. We've already gotten rid of a lot of the badges that you would scan to get into facilities with, and it will all go to a license plate-based type system, so it's very technology-heavy. And then the other thing that we'll be moving towards in the license plate recognition is, kind of the building block to get us there, is additional payment options. So we want to be able to bring credit card payment options to every meter in downtown, whether that be what we currently call a smart meter, where you can swipe a credit card, or a dumb meter, and a dumb meter would be something that doesn't take a credit card, doesn't report to anything, but we do have the ability to add that payment option, and that's what we'll be doing within the next six months is the goal, to have that completed. The only constraint on that we have now is that what you're seeing industry-wide in most industries is material constraints, so we're working on getting things scheduled, there are product backlogs. We are still waiting on some of our new meters to come in. So the same constraints you hear from normal businesses, we're having that, which is holding up some of our progress. We'll continue to maintain our facilities. This year, we picked up on our major projects within our facilities. That center picture shows that. That's actually a traffic topping that's going on there. So the parking ramps are often considered much like a bridge, very high use. They break down very quickly. But the maintenance that we're doing is preventative in nature, so that's an excellent investment to make sure these facilities are usable long-term, and that's what we're doing now, and we've continued that process this last year. And just the why of all this, why does parking exist? Well, it's to support downtown businesses. If you can imagine, the core of downtown didn't have parking originally built back in the 50s. The first parking ramp was the river ramp. We've already torn it down. That's why we have the parking meters there. That's why we want to create the turnover, is to create business and customers coming and going from downtown, in addition to providing parking for the businesses that are in our core area. So our team, we currently have 10 full-time FTEs budgeted. So originally, when I started, we actually had 15 FTEs, and you can see where they're listed out on there. So through efficiency and technology upgrades, we've eliminated five FTEs over the years, and we no longer have those in the budget. So we do believe we are efficient with the dollars that we are given, and we continue to work that way through upgrades and technology. So what does our budget look like? Nothing major for this next year, but we will touch on the changes that are gonna occur. So we are, there's an increase in revenue of about $41,000. There's several things that factor into that. Added in lease growth is part of that. A part of it will be our increase in our lease fees on a monthly basis. You'll see about 2% to 3% increase per lease per year. It'll be a dollar per location per month, is what that looks like to a user. We also have a meter rate increase, so that is actually already approved in budget. It was approved years ago. This will take us to $1.50 at our meters on street where our smart meters are. And that was actually planned previously a year ago, but we had postponed that because of COVID, with some of the economic challenges. We definitely didn't want to do it in a year like that, so we will plan to do that in 2023. And then we do have a decrease in some of our fine revenues. So clearly, that's because we're writing less fines. We do have an unfilled FTE at the parking patrol position at this time. That's a portion of it. The other portion of it is there's been a revenue shift from the airport. With COVID, we actually process all citations for the airport. There was a significant decrease in those citations out at the airport. We're hopeful that that will pick up in this next year, as travel's picked up again, but that is budgeted as a decrease over the next year. So you will see that. And then that FTE that's unfilled, we'll continue to monitor that. We want to be smart. There's talk of recession. We obviously have some technology upgrades coming, and we want to be smart where we use that FTE and how it's implemented. And then the other increases there are just inflationary increases with wages and benefits and utilities. On our capital side, we do have $65,000 budget for a capital improvement that is not allocated to a specific project at this time. And then we have some money for some equipment, which is a sweeper. We do sweep all of our own parking lots and ramps. We brought that in-house probably five, six years ago. We also have a utility vehicle that's actually for snow removal on sidewalks. We perform all of our own snow removal on the sidewalks with our own staff. But the larger snow removal that occurs in the ramps and lots is actually outsourced to a third party. You can see a breakdown of our budget on the bottom. The majority of our funds obviously go to personnel, which is about 50%, and then the rest go to kind of services and third-party contractors to run our operations on a daily basis. So pending any questions, that's all I have for you today.
Thank you. Counsel, questions? Counsel Jensen?
Thank you, Council Chair. Mr. Nelson, so with the six ramps and the 11 lots that we have, all of those are in the downtown area? Is that accurate?
That's correct.
And then, do you, on a yearly, or maybe every three years or five years, get appraisals of, you know, what the ramp would be valued at today in today's market with the revenue coming in, et cetera, or not? Or is that something that you have on your docket?
We don't. We don't have immediate plans, too. We do do monthly financial statements, and in that, we do kind of an equity calculation. I will tell you that it's probably undervalued because our land, we never appreciate it. So just like any, let's say we hold a piece of land in another department for the city, we don't go back and do a reappraisal on that every three or five years. We just keep it at the original amount. So I would say we're definitely undervalued. No, we don't do it, and it's not in the plan.
And then, do you have a plan, and obviously you've thought about it, and the city has thought about it, because we've sold a couple of pieces of property over the past X amount of years, is there any master plan to be out of the parking business, to hopefully, you know, maybe private partner, or private-public partner with developers, et cetera?
I think it's an option. It's not in any near-term plan. There's been no serious discussions. It has been a discussion, though. How long does parking, should it be a city function, or should we get out of it? There's pluses and minuses. On the plus side, we provide some very cost-effective parking solutions when compared to other cities. It's all self-sufficient in an enterprise fund. If you turn it over to private business, the prices probably go up. There's a margin. There's taxes that get paid on top of that, so they just inherently have to pay more. The downside is, we deflate the parking market in Sioux Falls. So it makes it hard, if you're a developer, to compete with us, because we have a monopoly. The new parking ramp we built, you would not be able to lease parking there for what we paid for, but we use our entire system to pay for it. We've been doing that for 70 years nearly in downtown Sioux Falls, so it's a major shift in operations. And I think to put it fairly is, you know, some cities do that with garbage service, and they may run a municipal trash service, and they keep prices low as a result of that. We do it with parking. Now, if there was a shift in that, it's certainly an option, but it's not in discussion.
Well, good work. You've done a great job, and it's significantly improved over the past five years. So thanks for what you do.
Other questions? Counsel Star?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Nelson, first, thank you for the ride-along opportunity. I had a chance to spend a couple hours with a couple of your people and walking on Phillips Avenue, and got saluted a couple of times, or at least your employees did as part of that. And I probably have a yellow envelope or two that I need to send over by the time we're done. Talk a little bit more about the airport, the philosophy of having them do their own parking, but use some of our services. Were we involved in their thought process of how they move forward with their new ramp, and, you know, whether it's a city asset, or whether it stays on the airport books, and kind of how did we get to them making that final decision?
So they are their own entity. They have their own funds, and they made their own decisions, to be clear on that. Initially, we were involved in some discussions, and when I say initially, I would say pre-COVID, three, four years ago, as they were very early on in this process. So we've had limited input from a parking department perspective. And I know if you look at the facility, we've seen the cost, and it's expensive, but we had the same discussions when we built our ramp. It never gets any cheaper. And if we looked, we have parking ramps we built for $8,000 a space. Now we're talking, when we built ours, we were in the $34,000, $35,000 a space, and now we're at the airport at like $50,000 a space. So is it expensive? Yeah. Is it needed in the long term? Probably. And like I said, it's not getting cheaper. And as far as the tickets go, we help manage it for them. We have the laws that we can stand behind to process these citations. They're issued out there. They come to us. We process them in our software, so they're able to have online payments. They're able to have us go through the legal process if needed. So it's cost-effective for them to keep their costs down. And we do a revenue split on it, is how it works. So they keep half, we keep half.
So does that, I dug deeper into the tickets than I wanted to go. So I'll drop that part. It just, it's, yeah, I'm not sure how I want to do that. That's good. That answers what I was looking for, I think.
Thank you. Other counselors? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your presentation. We'll move on to entertainment venues.
Good afternoon, Council. Sean Pritchett, Director of Finance. I'm gonna present the entertainment venues today, because when you think entertainment and fun, you think finance, right? So we're gonna jump right into this. We talk about entertainment taxes quite a bit as part of our monthly financial reports, but just as a reminder, this is the 1% sales tax that is collected on lodging, dining-out, alcohol sales, and ticketed events, and presently is contributing about $10 million in total tax base, which is then dedicated to the maintenance and operations and improvements of our various entertainment facilities. One of the nice things about having this is that dedicated source. It ensures that we have, with those dedicated funds specifically designated to those facilities, that we can be proactive on our maintenance, ensure that we're providing that first-class quality service and experience that our residents and visitors to Sioux Falls have come to enjoy. In terms of our overall focus, first and foremost, and we put this at the top, we partner with our entertainment venue managers to enhance and enrich our community. So this is really important to us. Later on this year, you're going to see the management agreements for each of these entities coming back forward for approval and an extension. And we do look at those partners. We look for that open communication. We work on that collaborative relationship. We do not see them as vendors. You will also see that, you know, we have encouraged our venue managers to provide the best return on the investment. So not only are we trying to provide a community benefit, but we're also trying to maximize the investment that we have for the taxpayers in terms of what they have invested into the facilities. And so we do that by having these private-party management, and has been really a home run for Sioux Falls to have private management of these, private and nonprofit management, because it increases the incentivization to be creative. It maximizes these financial opportunities to really ensure the long-term success of these various establishments. And as we have gone through COVID and went through some trying times with all of these, I think you could say that in many respects, we've come through that period stronger, and certainly ahead of most of the rest of the nation in terms of our capacity to regain our foothold in terms of providing entertainment options and arts for those in our community. But most of all is impact. How much are we impacting the residents of our community in terms of visitors, but also providing these options for them? And if we look back a few statistics on our entertainment venues, we've had 3.3 million attendees at 862 events at the Premier Center since it opened in 2014. On our convention center, which provides an important asset for our community in terms of large space availability, we've had 1.3 million attendees over the last, since 2014, at over 3,300 events hosted at that facility. And if you look at just the Washington Pavilion here in the last year alone, for their fiscal year ended in June of 2022, they had a record 115,000 guests at the Kirby Science Museum, 226 performances. And you multiply that by the 23 years that this has been an institution of our downtown. Again, just as a reminder of what our entertainment venues are, we have the Events Complex, which includes the stadium, but as well as our Convention Center, which provides an important role for our community as the largest indoor option available and facility for hosting these large-scale events, as well as our large fixed-seat venue in the Premier Center, which it's hard to imagine our community without that, since it was built in 2014. Also, we have the Washington Pavilion and the Orpheum Theater. Both of these have really anchored, both the north and the south side of our downtown. You've really seen the Orpheum Theater come into its own over the course of the last year or two years, due in large part to the strong management from the Washington Pavilion, who has taken that facility and really programmed it. And now, as Darren said, as he presented to this council here several weeks ago, you can't hardly find a night in order to schedule anything further, which is really exciting. We see that facility really taking off here in the years ahead, as that part of downtown really develops. And finally, we have the Washington Pavilion. I do want to make a little bit of a notation here, as we think, really big picture about why we invest in these kind of facilities. Yes, it's important to be promoting the arts. Yes, it's important to be able to provide entertainment options. But I think if you talk to many of our large-scale employers, or any employers here in the community, you know, workforce challenges is a major issue, and it used to be workforce and economic development. We would think about just trying to attract an industry to locate here, incentivize them to be here, and that was economic development. But economic development in the future is really about building a community that people want to live and be a part of. And many of these employers would tell you that places like the Washington Pavilion, those are the type of things that they show when they're trying to attract people to live in their community. So when we build a community people want to live in, it will grow naturally through economic development as well. Last thing I would say in that respect is, you know, as we look 23 years into the Pavilion being downtown, we have to look at what that investment meant to downtown, and what has changed about downtown over the last several years. And, you know, we have invested a lot of funds in making these facilities great, into keeping them as first-class facilities. And as we look forward, we look forward to what's next in our opportunities for investing in these type, in future entertainment facilities. As I said previously, we are generating about $10 million a year with the entertainment tax, so we have $10.7 million budgeted for next year. That's based on an estimate reset of 10% increase for the entertainment tax in 2021, with a 4% build-off of that for 2022, or, excuse me, 2022 and 2023. Presently, we're actually running at about 12% for this year. And so unless there's a major interruption to that, we expect that's probably where we would probably end up. But again, we're kind of hedging against any changes in the future, because of all of our tax revenues, this is probably the most volatile, even more so than just general sales tax, because it's very much based on discretionary type of purchases that people make. As we look at our Events Complex, we have an overall budget included for $5.7 million. Like many of our previous years for both of these facilities, it's very much a capital and repairs and maintenance-driven budget. That's over 82% between both of those facilities combined, between the Event Complex and the Pavilion and Orpheum. But looking just at the Event Complex, we have $2.4 million budgeted for repairs and maintenance, $3.1 million for capital improvements. Major projects that are on the docket for 2023 include $500,000 for improvements and refurbishments to exterior marquee and video boards at the Premier Center, $250,000 for lobby lighting at the Premier Center, $200,000 for upgraded floor seating at the Premier Center, $300,000 for a children replacement at the Convention Center. We're also looking to replace the banquet chairs, which are becoming aged at the Convention Center, for $275,000, and then a canopy rehab, which is about $150,000. So those are the major items that you'd see programmed in for next year. And again, we're always giving consideration at the time. We pull the trigger on each of those to make sure that it's a worthy investment at the time as well. As far as the Washington Pavilion, they have a $6.6 million budget. Again, $3.1 million is devoted to capital improvements, $1.4 million to repairs and maintenance, and then $2.1 million for operations. So we have no operational subsidy on the Event Complex side. They're operationally profitable from their activity out there. We do provide some assistance in terms of operations and maintenance of the building for the Washington Pavilion. There is no increase over the last three years relative to the Washington Pavilion. Some of the major projects that are scheduled for 2023 include a major upgrade and replacement for the sound systems, primarily the Somerville Hall at an expense of about $700,000, the Belvis Theater for $140,000, as well as improvements at the Orpheum Audio Support. And then lastly, one of the bigger investments is really looking at the historic lobby and restroom restoration and renovation at the Orpheum Theater, which is much due. If you've been in there, great facility, but it's time to really reinvest in that area. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you.
Oh, and I will also mention Jim Johnson from ASM Global from the Events Complex is also here. Darren Smith from the Washington Pavilion and Orpheum is here. If you have really hard questions, I will punt them to them.
Thank you. Counsel Bronco?
This is more of a comment rather than a question, but I just wanted to sign my agreement and share with my fellow members of the council. I really don't see this as consumption. I see it as an investment, because I'm absolutely convinced you're correct, that when we're in the business of courting new business investment to our community and recruiting workforce, that these kind of quality-of-life features, assuming that we've been intelligent and tactical about our investments, that when we're providing those wonderful features to people, that's what convinces them to either move here to work and join our workforce, or move here and invest in our community, start a business, or relocate a business. So it's not a luxury, per se. It's something that really drives our whole city economic base. It expands it, and it drives it, and it grows it. So we can't just throw money at it and expect it to pay off. But if we're smart about it, I really think it is an investment.
Other questions? Counsel Star?
Thank you. Director, I'll keep these to you, so you don't have a chance to punt, but we'll see how that works for you. When I'm looking at my budget book, I'll say this in the right way. Under the stadium, you know, as we keep reading in the media, we're ready to knock the whole thing down, so I keep a close eye on whether we put the bare minimums into it. I know you don't have the budget book in front of you, but the numbers don't add up, and the percentage changes and the things that are changing. When you look at the professional services, there weren't any in 2022. There's a $200,000 increase, and it's 100% increases, or a percent change, maybe because it was new. But if you look at the rest of the column of numbers, the percent change is Maybe because it was new, but if you look at the rest of the column of numbers, the percent changes don't add and change. But $200,000 for professional services?
Yes. So as we're kind of, we knew we were going to be going into this Event Center Complex kind of revisitation. And so we did program some funds in available for some master planning, whether it's relative to the campus, stadium, things of that nature. No determinations made at that point, but we did revisit the recommendations from the prior Event Center Task Force. The first step of that is really going to be bringing in a market study and assessing that area. You know, obviously, there's been a lot of commentary about the development around the Event Center. What does that look like? But we, you know, one of the recommendations was expansion of the Convention Center, tearing down the arena. Also recommendation on move, moving the baseball stadium. And so the first step of that is a market study to decide, you know, kind of what the market looks like, not just for the event campus, but the surrounding area. And then the second layer will be a master plan. And so that might include a design competition or something like we've done with Falls Park, which gave us some great ideas. But we did just set aside a placeholder for that potential expense.
So a couple, $200,000 for consultants. So it's really not the baseball stadium as much as it is the complex. And that's where we're paying for it or that's where it got put into the budget. There's a change in the operating contract of about $60,000 decrease, $59,000. What's changing in the, the operating contract that had the decrease?
Which one is that?
Still for the stadium.
Oh, for the stadium. Well, we're in discussions about a lease redo on that side. So I, I don't know if that, but that doesn't make sense because that doesn't flow through to our books. So I.
That's what I'm saying. That whole area with the stadium is, needs a little massaging.
Yeah, but that one, I can get back to you on that one.
Nothing goes down in government. So to see a change, a decrease in funding. So there was some, there must have been some repair and maintenance in 2021 because it's showing another 150,000 that we must have had some repairs. That one you can punt.
Yeah, we, I mean, we do have regular repairs and maintenance for the stadium. You know, obviously, we know that, you know, it's an aged stadium and there's discussions about, you know, how long its longevity will be going forward. But we also have an eight-year remaining lease on that facility. And so we have to meet certain basic repair and maintenance costs for that facility.
So we're putting, also doing some capital building improvements to the stadium, a couple hundred thousand?
Well, there's a couple of projects that are contemplated. They'll be given due consideration as we get closer to it. The one is a retaining wall that needs to be replaced. The second one is a sound system and we'll have to look at that one closely, you know, in terms of an investment. The timing of that is appropriate. But that's one of the areas that we've identified that probably needs to be upgraded. We just have to think about that investment as well as we get closer.
And then maybe we move it somewhere else or have that opportunity. I did, if it's okay, I had a couple of questions for Mr. Smith that probably are a little more let you off the hook. Good afternoon. I, can I, Mr. Chair, apologize for not asking first? Talk about $900,000 worth of sound equipment. I, we're going to get some incredible sound in that facility. We already have it. And so talk a little bit about the improvements in that capital expense.
Yeah, thank you. Darren Smith, Washington Pavilion Management Company. Yeah, as you see, that is where the major increase in some of the funding for the Pavilion in particular, it is in the sound system, both for the Mary W. Somerville Hall and the Belvis Theater. So, you know, it's just one of those deals where the improvements in technology and in this case in sound quality, the rates at which that advances, and then of course, the requests and the requirements that the higher-level Broadway shows, in particular, some of the concerts have, knowing the improved and enhanced technology that's out there. So there's just always more and more demand and request for those. So this will be a significant improvement all the way around. And it's just going to help us continue to get again, bigger and better Broadway shows and concerts.
No, it makes sense. Unfortunately, the, those bigger Broadway shows don't realize the acoustics we have in our facility because they're far superior. We hear it all the, or you hear it all the time. I hear it from the traveling groups that they may not need the extra. But it, it's also part of the experience.
The acoustics are very, very good. Absolutely.
Talk, then there's some sound upgrades, considerably less money at the Orpheum. So kind of the same type of?
Yes, that's right. And I would say, you know, if you had to compare and contrast the two, the Orpheum frankly has the greater needs. You know, again, the improvements will be nice in all of those. I think there, there are some needs in, in each of those venues, in each of those facilities. But the Orpheum really is overdue. Now, having said that, you know, Sean touched on this, the level of activity at the Orpheum in the last, you know, the last, I would say 12 to 18 months in particular, we saw it in 2019, but then especially in the last 12 to 18 months. It just, it really is phenomenal. And I think it's going to continue to, it's only going to continue to grow because of everything going on in downtown. The Sioux Steel, Shrapatu Developments, everything with, with Uptown at the Falls in recent years. So the Orpheum really does need an injection of some life and improvements there, starting with the audio, but also the lobby, the marquee, bathrooms and so forth. You're going to see all of that happen in the next couple of years.
We've said for years, or at least as long as I've been on the council and probably longer, that we needed you guys to take over the facility because it's the type of facility that you understand. So thank you. And I, I thank the administration and the mayor for making this change. And we've seen some amazing things with the Orpheum and that we can really be proud of that facility, as well as some tenants that you've added over the years and are just in the last few months and through the whole process. So. And coexisting with our staff with the multimedia. So.
Yeah. Well, thank you. Appreciate that. And, you know, again, a little history, I can recall 20 years ago when, you know, things were a lot different there and the city needing to step in and purchase the building and really some decisions on what do we do with it? Do we even keep it? So a lot can change and a lot has changed in the last 20 years for sure, for the better in this case.
Just a bunch of old guy talk. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I know, I know. Sorry.
Not you, me.
Well, me too.
Counselor Soberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Smith, thank you for being here and congrats on your good work and the many recent success stories. Just remind me, because I went blank on this, the recent generous donation that came to the Pavilion, what was that aimed at again? Or where do those funds go? Or was it specifically for a?
Yeah. So the nice thing with that is the dollars were designated specifically for the Kirby Science Discovery Center, but there were no other specific designations within that. So it's wide open in terms of making investments in, you know, physical improvements there, exhibits, programming. There's a number of different things. So of the 1.2 million, we've already identified $400,000 for the first project. And that's a project that we'll be announcing really soon, but it's taking a space, it's taking a space in the Science Center. I would say the only space that has not been improved in the last five years because of the cost associated with it. We will now be able to make that improvement. So that'll be the first project. And then we're putting a plan together right now for how we would utilize the additional $800,000 and looking at again, physical improvements. But there have been a lot of physical improvements in recent years and there's more coming. So what else can we do on the programming side that really does further the mission, benefits the community, all income levels and so forth? How do we get creative doing that? Because oftentimes donor gifts are very specific or designated or tied to something. And in this case, it is, and yet it's not.
What are average annual donations? Like, I mean, obviously, that's got to be the biggest one you've gotten, I'm assuming?
That is the largest single gift we've received from an individual at one time in the history of the Pavilion. Typical year for us, this past year, we generated about $1.5 million in individual donations, corporate sponsorships, and then grants from private entities. And so I would say that, you know, that increases each year about 5% to 10%, but 1.5 million is a pretty good rule of thumb, not including large gifts like this. So yeah, by comparison, 1.2 million at one time from one individual is pretty significant for the facility.
Thank you. Counselor Johnson.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Smith, could you give us an update on how the municipal band is working under your leadership now? I think we're, it was my first year we had our task force. So you've had it for over a year now and continuing to improve it?
I would say it is working fantastically well. And I want to be really clear about, I appreciate the compliment. I am not leading the municipal band. Nobody wants that as far as me in particular. So I just want to be clear about that. We've got some, some staff that are just doing a great job with it. And I go back maybe to Counselor Starr's comment about just finding the right fit for where these programs, you know, belong or who's working with them. And again, I think the municipal band is another example of that. It's just a really good fit with us. You know, Chris Hill, the bandmaster for many, many years, and he retired recently. I think he said it best, I'd said to him, wow, this, you know, you've been, never been happier. Things were working really well. You've told us that and you're retiring. And he said, because I feel like I can. And I, I'm, I'm not concerned about the future of the municipal band continuing and what it does for the community and so forth. It's where it needs to be and it's in a good place. And to me, that was probably the highest compliment that we could receive.
Other questions? Counselor McCarras.
Thank you, Chairman. This question probably is for Sean and it might involve you, Darren, in just a moment. But looking ahead to next week a little bit, asking it because it might not get you back. There's a planned arts coordinator position in the planning and development area. And I, not to quote Darren exactly, but I believe Darren said last time he was with us that Washington Pavilion hopes to be the premier arts and culture leader in the, in the Midwest. I'm trying to balance and understand, are we adding an FTE position that's way outside the wheelhouse of city government when we've got a management company that this is right in their wheelhouse of arts, culture, et cetera? Have we looked at that option? Why add versus asking the Washington Pavilion to accomplish those goals?
I guess I'm, I don't want to punt, but I am going to punt specifically because that's a request coming from Planning and Development Services. So I think it's most appropriate that they have that discussion in terms of their kind of vision and expected scope of work for that particular area.
Okay. And then secondly, you know, I agree with Counselor Bronco about this being an investment. At the same time, the reality is this is a public subsidy that we're offering to the Event Center and Washington Pavilion. And at the end of the day, we can't put Burger King on the back of a police officer's uniform. And so when we're in the middle of a recession, things are tight, potentially could get tighter. How are we encouraging the Event Center Complex specifically? Really appreciate Carrie and Darren, the work they're doing there in regards to donor development philanthropy. How are we encouraging more philanthropy, private investment at the Event Center Complex?
I don't know so much private investment because I don't know that that really strikes at people's heartstrings in terms of a private investment. What I will say is working with our third-party manager ASM Global, with obviously them taking the lead, they've done an outstanding job of maximizing revenues through sponsorships and other opportunities, naming, recognition and so forth. They have been very creative about maximizing the use of that space. They have a, every year, they have a list of everything that they're attempting to market and what they're pursuing. And even during COVID, they were renewing agreements and sponsorship agreements at a time when we weren't even open and being able to retain that, keep our suite holders happy, keeping waiting lists for club seats and for suites, which is pretty outstanding effort. So I think, you know, sponsorships is really where that, we're going to be able to maximize that revenue when it comes to the Event Center. Because unlike the Pavilion, it doesn't generate kind of that private charitable interest like you do for that.
Thank you.
Other questions? Counselor Starr.
Sorry, if I can follow up, Director. In the Events Complex budget, there's also an additional 150,000 for consulting. Are we adding that into the 200 at the stadium? So there's 350?
Correct. Yeah. So we kind of balanced it between the two, two areas.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Seeing none. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll move on now to police.
Good afternoon, councilors. John Tims, Sioux Falls Police Department Police Chief. And we'll get right into it. Our purpose is partnering with the community to serve, protect and promote quality of life. It's our mission statement. It's what we live by each day. We have a strong understanding and a commitment to justice, but also to partnering with the community and working through issues. And it's our job to enforce the law, maintain order and prevent crime through community-oriented policing that we have within our community. Again, as we look forward, our focus is always as stated, but also maintaining the appropriate number of officers and assets to deal while also maintaining that work-life balance with our employees. Our collaboration with Sioux Falls Fire Rescue and Metro 911 on the Public Safety Campus and Billups and Operations, as you've heard, is coming to fruition. And we'll hear more from that in the future. And also our work to build trust and reduce youth violence within the community. Some of our programs this summer, as far as neighborhood soccer, camp postcard, our hydrant parties are different things we're working on. And ultimately to ensure the safety of our police officers by providing continued training, adequate equipment and reliable video technology, which I commend the administration and the councilors for their commitment to this in the past couple of years. Previous budgets, we had big asks for tasers and technology, body cams, public safety campuses. And the investments that have been made by these councilors and by this administration has really paid dividends to the point for positioning us for success for the future, which really leads us to this year's budget, which is a focus on our people. Our police officers responded to roughly 128,000 calls for service last year. Again, the growth of our calls for service is very near or a little below the growth of our population at this point. What often is forgot sometimes is our animal control officers have responded to close to 17,500 calls for service as well. I think sometimes they forget forgot in our, our, our service spectrum as they don't always gain the attention. But again, their work is becoming very, very difficult as well. And with that, we are asking for four new police officers for next year, as well as one health and wellness coordinator for 2023, which would be a grant-funded position. The four new police officers will bring our authorized strength to 288 officers. And really this health and wellness coordinator would be the new position, which bears some explaining, especially as you're looking at the different positions that are coming up. What we found is with, is the workforce changes across the board in all industries, there's an emphasis on employee health and wellbeing and maintaining the employees that you have and keeping them in that direction. You've seen in the past year, we've made steps in here by transitioning 83% to 84% of our officers to 10-hour schedules, introducing fit time, but also really like in emphasis, emphasizing that work-life balance for employees. We've reached this point in our department where we have numerous programs, whether it's Pivot, which is our culture and events type of thing for peer support, our Chaplain Program, the different things that we do to take care of our employees. And this new position would basically be focused on maintaining those programs administratively. What you have is a lot of officers right now doing collateral duties in order to maintain that employee health and wellness period. This would bring this all under one administrative stop and further augment our programs. We've seen other agencies around the country, in particular Rapid City, use a position like this and really enhance their employees' work experience. And therefore, we see direct translation to that to the public as well. And so that's again, a grant-funded position, but one that we're excited to work with and really study its effects as we bring that into one position to really help our employees. Our operating budget, again, last year's budget brought to you a lot of technology things and a lot of different pieces, whether it was tasers or body armor, things like that. But here again, it's back to people. There is a 2.3 million increase in our contributions to Metro 911. If you did your homework, that should stand out to you as that's a substantial increase from years previous. And this is a placeholder right now for some, some future things that we're working on. The strategic land acquisition team that the city has commissioned to really go out and proactively look for areas that we can develop and really enhance our city services. We're just in constant communication with some of the county-held stuff that is out there. That original 2.1 million for the PSAP was a county commitment. So think of that as a placeholder as we just continue communications with the county and to see if there's any areas of land acquisition that we can do. And as you know, all budget items that kind of roll through to metro communications for both fire and other services roll through the police budget. But again, that would, would stick out as, as a thing, but it's really more of a placeholder for future moves if, if they need to be made within this budget cycle. Again, $200,000 increase to move annual video storage to operations and capital, which is a bookkeeping issue. We've seen decreased fundings of some of the coronavirus-related grants we were having, and of course, $104,000. Increase for fuel as the fuel situation becomes a little more interesting. While prices have gone down in the last couple of days, at least it was nice to get below four bucks a gallon, just in time for all my vacation driving to be done for the summer. It was nice to see that come down, but we obviously have to make sure that we're making proactive steps to do that. And with that, with the supply chain thing, because this will come up, our cap, we have 16 vehicles that we're waiting for, all hybrids. We're trying to make that transition to further augment and really help with that fuel issue. We've seen the hybrids pay great dividends. And like, I talked to numerous councilors about this. We're not doing this just for the sake of checking a box. We are seeing financial dividends, which is why we use two vehicles and kind of a trial basis to make sure that that would, would really be beneficial for the officers and for the community and for our bottom line when it comes to fuel costs. But ultimately, as you look, 79% of our budget returns back to personnel. Uh, we have a employee heavy budget and that's just the services that we provide and what we need to do. Our capital budget, as you see, we have a total overhaul of our in-car video camera system, which I believe is roughly $700,000. We've seen those videos are just the price of doing business and that next level of technology is something that we just need to upgrade. Uh, patrol and K-9 vehicles, again, I kind of briefly touched on, but we're looking at our K-9 vehicles and getting either F-150s or Tahos as they're now become more reliable and better for our, 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 our K-9 officers and our K-9 dogs as well. And then our, you'll see some, uh, radio upgrades in there. There was a P-25 compliance issue. We had to change over a lot of our radios to come up with a new standard. It's P-25 because it was supposed to be 2025, but they moved that up to 20, second quarter of 2023. But again, through great work through finance and through our, our, our collaborative efforts, we're able to find ways to get that ahead. So that should finish off that compliance issue and go from there. Again, come back to, to where we're at from, for people. We are currently authorized at 284, so this new budget would authorize us at 288, with I think roughly 326 employees total when you count our civilian employees. Our current staff and strength thing is at 278 right now. And we have 43 officers in probation, 23 on their own and 20 in either field training or in-house training. Right? So we've seen through the past couple of years and there's been consistent steady growth with year-to-year budgets. We're making sure that we get those FTEs and not some of the stagnant growth we saw in the past. And we keep making sure we're growing, still not quite realizing our full utilized strength yet. But again, with five to 10 retirements next year, some strategic planning we've done with finance. Looking ahead, uh, we really are hopeful for next year, what we can accomplish with the staffing. So again, I could talk all day, but be happy to take your questions and you can go from there.
Councilors, questions? Counselor Selberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks, Chief. Couple of questions. Probation has to do with new officers, I'm assuming?
Correct.
That's their time of?
Yeah, every, everyone we hire has 15 months, uh, probationary period of which they're fully on the, are, they're on the department, but they have a probationary period where they're, they can be let go for non-performance and other issues in there. And what we find is that some classes have a very high success rate. Typically, when we get them out on their own, they're going to do well, they're going to make it, but we lose people in training and that's just a reality of our profession.
Okay. What does, uh, what is the average annual salary for a new police officer? So we're going to add four this year.
I believe the, the starting salary is 28, um, 2830 in 2023 hourly wage.
Okay.
I could get my calculator out, but I don't have it in front of me.
Probably figure that out.
Yeah.
Thanks. What all falls under the category of rentals? Is that all equipment?
Yes, we have some technology rentals and some other equipments. There's also, uh, we look at our operating software for our different facilities and different things. I could get you a, a more detailed thing because I think in our line item, the rentals is roughly 1 million. I think if I remember right, our Central Square contract falls under rentals. Yeah. Yeah. So there's just a lot of things that we don't necessarily own, but have to run for services there.
Okay. And then finally, um, vehicles. How, I mean, do you open that up when you're getting new ones? I mean, do you go to certain dealerships? Do you open it up to this net? Is there always a certain vendor or how does that always?
So there's a state bid and we worked through that to figure out that goes out and that whoever is awarded that bid, we work with. The issue that we're running into is the issue that every consumer is running into right now is that you just can't get a car. Uh, we had two F-150s budgeted for this year. One of them, uh, was assigned a VIN number, so we think we're going to get it. The other one is probably going to be canceled. Of the 16, uh, cruisers we had ordered, there's some supply difficulties where some of the features didn't have the right ship and will have to be retrofitted later. And it really is a struggle across all areas of the market, which is causing us right now. I'm very thankful, again, we talk about collaboration with other city departments. Our fleet guys do an outstanding job of keeping our cars going and having the ability to have them work on it in-house and get that going. So we may see for the next couple of years that we have to do, uh, more with less, so to speak, on vehicles. And we're just very wary of the supply chain issues that again, you'll experience if you go out and try to buy a car today.
Right. Well, thanks for being here today. Thanks for all that you and your team do for our city. Thanks.
Other questions? Counselor McCarras?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Chief. Really appreciate specifically the way you engage with the public. I just had a couple of opportunities to see you with forums and things like that. So appreciate the way you've made yourself available to the public. Two questions. First is, when you look at the balance between the drug issue, school security and street kind of watching for speeding, et cetera, and thinking about adding personnel. If you had to prioritize school security, drugs and kind of street thing, how are you prioritizing those three areas? And where, where are you most worried in those three?
I think we really have to look at a balanced approach towards all of that because to each individual stakeholder, one is more important than the other. But the reality is, is that they're all important. Had the, uh, privilege of working with the Sioux Falls School District, Dr. Stavum, and shot a video just last week talking about our security measures. And we've done the work in certain areas, especially with the, the school safety piece that we have in place, a great SRO program and are continuing to invest in that. But it is a balancing act and you're absolutely right because we have to look at the whole spectrum. They all have a similar importance and where we need to shift our resources at a certain moment and go from there. But again, school safety, I can't say enough about our collaboration with the Sioux Falls School District and how we work together as far as really making sure that we're on the cutting edge of, of best practices and always looking for ways to be better in that area.
And final question, the grant funded position. Where's the grant coming from and how long is it for?
It's a two-year grant and it's got a long acronym that I'm not going to mispronounce for you right now. All right. We, uh, yeah, I'll just mumble.
So we'll be on the hook year three is what you're saying.
Yeah. So, but really this is to really evaluate it. Uh, we talked about this position quite a bit and we realize sometimes when we ask for a position, it takes the place of some other position, right? And so this is an evaluation period where we really have to make sure that we're getting bang for buck out of this position. But the reality is, is we can't afford not to, um, because the current workforce is a little different than maybe what some of us grew up with, with what we're willing to endure in the workplace environment. And we just have to make sure we're making that investment, uh, and really looking for ways to keep who we have, right? The retention piece is important and this is one way we can support because the reality is of our profession and we've seen it just within the last year. Some of the, the peer support issues when it comes to PTSD or the trials and tribulations at the job. Like we have to make sure that we're supporting our employees and making sure that we have that there. So again, I think some people might say, well, let's throw another officer in there. Well, we have to take care of the ones we have and again, make sure that they're healthy and, and able to perform and, and be in a healthy space.
Thank you.
Counselor Starr?
Yeah, thank you. Couple of places. Let's start with the easy one because you can follow our finance director if you can punt if you need to, uh, as part of it, because I think this.
I wore my football shoes, I'll punt if needed.
It's third down, we're not punting yet. Talk about drones in some of the investigations I see in your capital program that you're going to add an additional drone. And part of the, part of this conversation is probably with finance too, because we're seeing more departments add drones and some of those things. And does it need to be a fleet expense and, and that type of thing? But I, I need more from you from the, the investigative, uh, help that it provides for officers and recreation, accident recreation and in just heard a lot about it lately.
Yeah. So when drones first came out, there was so much hesitation because the key word drone became synonymous with a bunch of other kind of theories and ideas of what was going to, what were going to happen. What we've seen from the, our drone program is what we thought would, well, we just need this, this one, uh, piece of equipment and we'll be able to do this or this is that we were using them very, very regularly. Um, I think sometimes people think about it's the field search component or looking in for people, but really our accident reconstruction piece has been huge. We've been able to deploy, um, these drones for missing persons type situations. Also for some of our critical incidents we've had. Um, again, there's very strict guidelines and doctrines on when, where and how. But in some of the recent SWAT callouts, we've had to be able to utilize that asset has increased officer safety and really has given us great situational awareness. And so we were able to purchase some of our initial drones through some grant funding. Uh, but we realized that this is so important and so utilized that it needs to live in our budget a little bit. We just can't rely on the hopes of a grant to make this program work. There has to be some investment and we'll see that go up even more in the future. And really as Sioux Falls gets bigger, this is probably beyond my years here, right? The reality of operating in, uh, uh, of air program, either helicopter or plane is really cost prohibitive, right? Some of the advancements in drone technology are going to give us the ability in the future to really get some of those same effects at a fraction of the cost. Still not cheap, right? But that's down the road and we'll just keep, keep that drone, uh, issues on progression. But the ability, again, for us to do in an accident reconstruction, if we can fly that drone, map that intersection in a fraction of the time. At the end of the day, it gives us great evidence and, and great, uh, documentation, but also allows the city to return to business as normal after we get that scene cleared.
How are you doing the training and the operation and that part of it? Because it's not, I couldn't, I mean, I can grab the joystick and.
Yeah.
And throw it up in the air, but I got a feeling there's a little more to it.
So I think sometimes people get a little bit annoyed with us because we follow the rules too strictly when it comes to our drone program. There's a lot of people who don't necessarily follow the exact procedures and protocols. We understand and through Lieutenant Hinko, who has done great work within our drone program, everything is by the book. Our policy is very, very, uh, strict. If you see our annoying social media announcements that we flew the drone, that's because we want to be that transparent with it, even though people sometimes give us feedback that we should stop talking about it, right? But we want to make sure that everything's done from 107A licensing to everything that needs to be there to insurance. Again, we've been able to build the drone program and it continue to build it that will be, uh, on par with some of the, the best in the country.
If I can, Mr. Chair, just a couple more, I'll zip through them. Talk about precincts a little bit. You know, we're adding to the capital program. It's a couple of years out for an east side report to workstation and precinct, but how's it going currently? Because we've made that investment down at 57th Street. I mean, what, what are you seeing in difference other than just space, obviously in the?
One of the primary things for us, A, the officers enjoy it. The reality is if you live on the southwest side of town, it's going to be a 25 to 30 minute commute sometimes, depending on traffic and where you're at. The ability to report to work to get there and be home sooner, uh, it allows us to deploy a little quicker. But really, Counselor Starr, you hit it right on the head. One of the main things is our space needs. And again, we go back to early 2000 when our building was designed. I don't think, and no offense to anybody who designed it, right? But there wasn't an idea of how much we would grow within that timeframe. So the southwest report to work allows us to alleviate some of the stress on our building. We look strategically ahead, fall of 2023, spring of 2024. We can relieve some more stress with our public safety campus. And then we look further to the future, 26, 27, on getting that southeast foothold. And we really are having serious conversations. The term precinct is used and a precinct requires an entire command staff and command structure there to, to operate. Uh, we are looking at more report to work as we plan for the future with a forward-facing element where we have the ability to staff that, maybe host things there, uh, deploy some other resources and kind of get that feel for the, the foothold. I, I'm using words like substation, but really it's a foothold in a different part of the, the community and also one we can kind of relieve stress off our main campus. If we could go back in time and design another couple of levels on the current LEC, I don't know if facilities would want to be paying for the amount of upkeep it would take right now. But it would have given us a chance for growth, so we're growing in different ways.
I, I, I've noticed it in the difference in the squad cars and less dings and scratches and stuff of, you know, I mean, because it was so tight to get in one unit to the other and just all the equipment that the officers have to, uh, turn on before they even hit the street, um, that part of it. So, um, do you see part of the 80 folks that are, um, operating out of the southwest side of town? Are they moving then to that part of town because it's closer to work or is it?
No, you'll see a lot of officers that live down there choose to bid that. They may take a different either shift or day off combinations in order to bid to that location. Back when I lived at 57th and TLS Road, I would have been all over that, right? That would have been a, a, a perfect bid. I would have maybe changed my days off for it. And I think we're seeing people who just want to report there for work.
If I can, one more and then I'll, I'll move on. I was a little tough on Director O'Toole last week. I pushed him really hard on the issue of diversity and we got to the point where we recognize that we have an issue for the city. At least we can admit that. Every year you guys come in and you tell us about how we want to diversify the, both the police, fire, all of our city employees and provide more opportunities so that our city employees look more like the community. We can have that debate. Give me something. Give me something to take back that says we're making progress somewhere in this budget that we can give you the tools or you can be honest, you don't have the tools to do much more.
Well, there's some seed money in here, uh, for us to work on developing a program. And we don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves, but collaborating with, uh, Southeast Tech and their law enforcement program, but really creating an alternative pathway. I'm hesitant to talk about in detail, uh, what still needs to be developed, but the reality is, is that for certain programs, unless we take a shot at it, we're never going to get there. And I think you'll, there's some money within this budget where we have earmarked a way that we're going to start laying the groundwork for this program. Where basically we create a different pathway through law enforcement, uh, through Southeast Tech and had conversations with the school district. Uh, what's it look like if we partner with CTE? And again, these are things that we're working on.
Right.
But I think there's room for growth within, again, and we've talked in the past, like everybody wants this easy button on how we can accomplish this. But also our work at Camp Postcard this summer, neighborhood soccer, some of the other meetings. I look at the future police officers of our, of our city as being sometimes 10 to 12 year old kids, right? Who maybe don't even know it yet, but we need to make sure we make those investments and see it. But it's a, a question worth asking and I know that you'll keep asking it and I'll expect to keep reporting what we're trying to do to make.
You only got one more time of me asking it, so. The thing that, that concerns me is that when you look nationally at police forces that have had racial issues. Their force doesn't look like their community.
Yep.
And I could, I, I'm willing to say our force doesn't look like our community. I'm not looking for specific numbers and quotas, but I'm looking for the opportunities. And again, Director O'Toole said last week that we can only hire the people who apply. So I'm putting some of that on you. I, I'll, I'll get the fire chief in a few minutes, so he's at least gets the head start on the, the question. But if we don't diversify and make our, our forces look like the community, we can't protect our community.
Yeah.
And, and we're not that far away from that being a problem for our community if it isn't already.
There's certain things, everybody's aware of it. There's certain things that don't move the needle. If we hire a group of 10 and they're primarily Caucasian, there's really no comment, there's numerous comments. If we hire a group that's over half of women or Hispanics like we had a couple, uh, classes ago, no one really pays attention, right? And so they're very easy to point out the lack on one side, but then some of the strides that are made are always, are always there. And really the officers that show up that we see who are from diverse communities are there to do a job and they don't want to necessarily be singled out. But again, this is something that we anticipate talking about forever and making efforts in. And I think it's something that again, is with best intentions, but sometimes again, looking for new solutions and new ways to engage that is, is difficult, so.
Thank you.
Counselor Bronco?
I wanted to return to something you were discussing earlier because I think it's fantastic. These, uh, report to work centers, in my view, and I think there's evidence to support this, not only will be a benefit to the officers that you see, but I think they will deter crime in those areas where they exist because of the visibility of the force. And as we, uh, have population growth in the southeast and the southwest, I think that's an important function. Letting the people who live in those areas and the people that pass through those areas see that there is a police presence, see the, the building, the structure. You, you said they'll be forward facing, there's going to be police vehicles there that in and of itself, even though we'll have the same number of officers doing their jobs every day as they already do. Just the fact that there's a footprint there, I think will bring down some of the crime in those regions. So I'm excited to see that happen. I'd like to see it happen particularly in the southeast, a little bit faster maybe than 27, you know? But that's something that we can discuss as time goes on. I just think it's a terrific idea and something that we ought to do.
Yep. And we're committed to that. I think that's something that we recognize the importance of. It's with a great thing about the LEC is it's a central hub. If it wasn't located right in the center of everything, there would be a real, uh, urgency to, to really get that moved. But there's some nice thing that we are centrally located, but now as we develop satellites throughout the community in a far-reaching plan, well into the 2030s here as far as northwest or northeast or how we strategically acquire land in a variety of ways for the future is becoming ever more, I think in the past, we thought all lands everywhere, we could always find it. Well, now we're seeing that land is really at a premium. We need to make sure we're thinking 10 to 20 years down the road when we acquire new, new land that we could potentially develop.
I wanted to say also thank you for everything that you do. Obviously incredibly important and we're all very, very grateful.
Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Chair. Chief, I was, uh, going to ask you, the SROs, are those all funded out of your operating budget?
Yeah, they're, they're funded out of our operating budget. There's no, um, necessarily subsidy from the school. Yeah.
And then are you only in Sioux Falls School District? Are you in Harrisburg, you know, I don't know, nine school districts that we have in the city?
Yeah, any school district that resides within our city limits, we have a presence with. Now, that may not be a full-time officer, but either an officer assigned to, we look at some of the Harrisburg schools, especially with that big boom of growth towards the south side of town. Like we're making sure that we maintain in touch bases with even the private institutions within our community as well. So if there's a school district within the city limits, then we're either assigning an officer, at least as a contact for that school as well.
Perfect, thanks.
Other questions? I've just got a couple. On your capital program, K-9, $16,000, is that one K-9?
That's one dog. A few years ago, they were about $10,000, but like everything else out there, it's got more expensive. And so we've seen, um, most of our dogs are come from Europe and that are acquired through, uh, a breeder or a, I should say, uh, the person acquires it from down there. And that price has gone up substantially each year. But we are getting high quality dogs, but you could look at it as inflation and we even had difficulty. And we even had difficulty just with during COVID, the market shutting down with travel and everything becoming more expensive. So again, that's for one dog at this point.
I appreciate that. And my last question, Chief, I continue to hear, I would say at least 50% of the conversations I have with the public is about safety.
Yep.
About crime. Why aren't there 25 police officer requests for FTEs in this budget?
Sure. And we could look at where we're at and what our carrying capacity is. One way to look at this is even if we had 25 positions, we would struggle to fill them within our current growth rate, how we process applicants, how they come through, what we're seeing is our washout rate. Just recently, we hired our class of 10. We were hopeful that that class would be 14 to 15. The reality is, is that right as we were going through our backgrounds, many didn't make the cut, right? They either was a psych issue, other testing issues, or they just didn't pass our background test. So even a huge increase in capacity wouldn't necessarily translate. It would just make our numbers look different. And so I think if we look forward, because it's a very fair question and one I anticipated seeing, we have to look at sustained growth and really each year, and what this council and this administration has done is never looked at a year of zero growth. We are always making investments in public safety. We're growing incrementally throughout the year. We're maintaining, but at the same time too, we're always evaluating where we're at. Looking towards the next year, what we have as far as looking at grant opportunities through COPS grants and different ways we can do things, we're always looking at ways to enhance that. But we're also looking at ways to work smarter by taking some of our other jobs that were once phone reporting for officers and allocating them to different parts of our department, maybe to free up officers' times out there. So again, if we look at our ratio that we're maintaining, but as in the future, you won't find a budget presentation where we're not adding officers, at least from my request or my standpoint. We're always going to want to be keeping up that growth. Because I think if we can look in the future, we're going to continue to grow as a city and we just need to maintain that growth as well.
Well, I appreciate that. And hopefully if the HR gets their talent acquisition person, maybe some of your recruiting problems will go away.
Yeah, like we've tried numerous things through bonuses and different things, but if you look nationwide, just this morning, and I came in, the IACP daily email, departments around the country facing extreme staffing shortages, people forced to work numerous amounts of overtime in different ways. So we're not immune to some of those things, but what we are, we're in a better position than a lot of agencies our side. But at the same time, we have to maintain very, a lot of vigilance in making sure we maintain that forward momentum that we've been able to maintain the past several years and keep that going forward. So.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Now on to the best department in the city, the fire.
Counselors, thank you. Matt McRevy, Fire Chief, Sioux Falls Fire Rescue. I'm pleased to be in front of you today and share with you our request for our 2023 budget proposal. With it, I'd like to start off, especially sharing with what our mission and our purposes for Sioux Falls Fire. We're absolutely dedicated to protecting the people and the property of our community through hazards and emergencies. Our primary function in doing that is through reactive force operations. But additionally, we are incredibly excited to continue to drive our culture of community risk reduction. As a department, we're absolutely dedicated that every emergency that we can avoid and help our community avoid is one that ultimately serves our community better. We do this through public education, inspection, code enforcement, as well as investigation. Just a few statistics to share there. Across our organization, we're able to inspect over 4,000 commercial properties over the last year in 2021 to help make sure that they're prepared for emergencies. On a response side, we had just under half a billion dollars worth of property exposed to fire in 2021. Very proud to say that we were able to preserve 99% of that fire. That's a commercial and residential property that's now able to be maintained for the uses that they have. Additionally, very excited about the cardiac saves through our emergency medical services program. Those 17 saves represent people that were in cardiac arrest. We're able then to ultimately aid them in leaving the hospital fully neurologically intact, being able to rejoin their family in the community, and that's very impactful for the entire community. You'll see the focus of this budget presentation is a number of key areas here. First one here is investing in our current facilities. Very pleased in working with finance, the team in the facilities to maintain our 12 fire stations. We have our 12 fire stations, but additionally a fire headquarters, a fire maintenance shop, a fire prevention division, and a training center. A lot goes into that on a daily basis and very excited about maintaining those and making sure that we can have 24/7 coverage there. Like Chief Toome said, very much collaborating with our other public safety partners to make sure that we're prepared for a rollout of our public safety campus at the tail end of 2023. Very excited about the progress that we're making there and excited about working with the team there. We continue to work and have strong relationships throughout our community with partners so that our community risk reduction efforts, we're working in tandem and in concert with people so that as we're out there and we're meeting our community and we're seeing what needs we have out there, we're able to then leverage some of our other partners as well so that we can ultimately reach the community where they need to be met at. And then additionally, working and collaborating with our partners through the strategic land acquisition team, we're spending a lot of time dedicating, looking at where do we need to be in the future. Obviously with the growth of our city and with the fact that the fire department is really a capital based, capital intensive program, that we need to be able to meet our travel times and be able to provide equitable service. We're continually working with that team to identify opportunities throughout our community where we can be in growth areas so that we can continue to develop and provide excellent customer service. Like any other proud organization, we wouldn't be near the organization we are today without our people. Very proud to share that over the last year, we were able to mitigate 14,509 calls for service. It's really across a broad spectrum of emergency services from emergency medical services, like I stated, fire, urban search and rescue, hazmat as well as wildland. Additionally, like any team, we need to keep growing the team, growing the bench, growing who's in leadership positions. It's been incredibly intensive. Counsel Sale, you mentioned the talent acquisition coordinator. We've been very diligent and engaged with human resources. We've tested and promoted through virtually every rank over the last year. It's a very intensive process, but it's what we need to do to keep, make sure that we're maintaining the team and building those next leaders into the future. Additionally, our community risk reduction efforts, we're continually out there in the schools. We've developed and delivered education and community risk reduction program to virtually every classroom K through four through our entire community. Additionally, our professional standards and our training division has, over the last 18 months, delivered three cadet academies to certify 42 new firefighters and to bring in and coordinate just shy of 120,000 hours of continuing yet across our entire organization. It's no surprise to this body, it's been incredibly busy four years on an emergency management side. There's been seven activations of the EOC across a plethora of things. And that's not even to speak to the smaller incidents that have required multiple agency coordination, where our emergency manager, our emergency management team has stood up to help make sure that our other departments are supported and our community is able to get back to full operation as quickly as possible. And then speaking to the growth in our response capabilities and where we look to request our FTE request for this budget cycle, there's two FTE requests that are brought forward, a battalion chief of EMS as well as an EM management, emergency management and public safety campus coordinator positions. That BC of EMS position is one since 2000, when we went to the six battalion chief model that our department has been in. We have not added a battalion chief for operations. This would be an operations based battalion chief that helps aid in that time. We've brought in obviously a number of services related to EMS. Additionally, we've brought on additional 67 firefighters and five fire stations. So as we continue to grow, this is one of those mid-management pieces that will allow us to give project management as well as supervision and direct support. The battalion chief rank is the only rank that we have in operations that doesn't have any backfill possibility to it presently. So anytime that we have any kind of leave or benefit utilization from that rank, we end up bringing in another person from that captain's rank. So this will give us some additional backfill and capacity in that position. Additionally, the EM coordinator and the public safety campus coordinator, this is a position I'm incredibly proud to bring forward. I think it's a strong representation of how well we're working as a public safety team. We've identified and the mayor's office has identified for some time a need for redundancy and backfill in that emergency manager position. Regan is but one person and has a pretty heavy load at times. So we want to make sure that as we grow, you know, as we surpass 200,000, as we look regionally, it certainly makes sense that we have additional capacity and backup in that position. And then additionally, as we brought in our consultant to look at what a business model looks like for a public safety campus, they absolutely supported that you need a dedicated person that can help run and manage that facility. So the training staff that is presently in the police department, presently in the fire department, they're at capacity. They're providing everything that they need to for their people. So to bring on a facility of that size and think that we wouldn't provide support to operate it would be a little bit foolish on our part. So we thought that this was a great opportunity that with an emergency operations center being in that facility and having the manager of the facility additionally be an emergency manager coordinator will really give us that ability that they own the facility, they run it, they're able to keep it at a ready status. So when we have something striking our community, that position is going to be able to stand up and make sure that our teams can come together, provide that emergency response, and then continue on with into the recovery mode. Happy to answer more questions with that as we move through here. I am going to start touching here on some of our operating budget requests. Nothing terribly exciting with a lot of this. Was very proud to see the work that went into it, both from the finance team side as well as working down into our teams. As we look at, there's a lot of focus on how do we make sure that what we have, we're maintaining. So the $238,000 increase is looking at how do we maintain and replace what we presently have for fuel, equipment, supplies, and repair of existing. Additionally, that kind of carries through into $103,000 increase for our facilities. Worked very closely with the facilities team to establish, all right, what do we need to contribute to that fund so that our 15 remote work locations are able to be maintained and active at all times? We do have a $75,000 increase in there for technology initiatives. One of the areas that we do find that we're kind of unique is that with the extensive mobile fleet, with those remote work locations, the more that we can focus on connectivity, communications, and leverage the video conferencing, the more efficient we can be. There was a time where, you know, at a whim, we would drop, go to the next station for a meeting for a training and that, and it's just not efficient, both on a fuel basis, but as well as keeping people reliable in their territories to respond to the emergencies they have. So that's really the basis for that request. And then additionally, a $57,000 increase request for part-time employment. So some wage adjustment there, but additionally, one part-time position to support EM emergency management operations there. Last part that I'll touch on here is on the capital side of it. Through the programs that are listed in the capital book, we do have requests in there over the next four years to look at land acquisition money. Additionally, there is a spot in there for 2026 to stand up and build and begin operating Fire Station 13 in our community. And then the final request on that is in '27, is to look at the funding to start remodel of a Fire Station 6, which is at 41st and Marion Road. We've identified that's an absolute critical spot for us. It's in the absolute right location. It's just with the aging infrastructure there in that facility, it doesn't meet what our needs. I would encourage anyone to stop through for a tour. It's incredibly full and it just, as we identify that that's the spot we need to be and grow in the future, there's just a lot of needs there. So I appreciate moving that one forward in the capital plan. Here in the equipment and OSAT piece, there is two fire station, or fire apparatus replacements. That is a 2004 rescue engine that's out for replacement, as well as we still have a 1997 engine that is in the fleet. We're looking to replace those two. Other substantial piece would be the Fire Station Alerting. This would be the piece that takes information from our CAD vendor and gets it out to our people in the stations. That product that we're presently using is at end of life. There's some concern about reliability and security on that piece. So we are very much looking forward to moving forward and getting the most state of the art alerting so that our people can get the information they need to respond in a quicker fashion. Last two that I will touch on there would be a life back upgrade for our ambulances. That does, is a flow through for state grant funding. And then additionally, some new hazmat detection radiological equipment that additionally is grant funded. So with that, I appreciate the time in front of you and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have for me.
Counsel, questions? Counsel Star.
Yes, thank you, Chief. Do we really want to call it Station 13? Can we skip a number? Does anybody want to work it?
We just came across this with our badge numbering, so we're working in sequential order and we had a, we were past 660, so we skipped one there.
Appreciate that. Who's managing the finance in the project for the training center? How do we know we're still on budget and getting, I guess I'm more interested in the supplies and the things you need as part of that. So who manages that part of it?
Absolutely. So through engineering, Aaron Bofen Camp is a project manager that is coordinating with the architect and with the contractor. We were fortunate to go out and do a tour of the facility just last week. We're looking to stand up a tour for the council as well. Very pleased with the work that the contractor is doing out there. There's some moderate delays in some of the steel for the administration building, but they're anticipating that the six-story tactical tower will be up by Christmas. They're pouring the floor in their range building and the EVAC track is about 95% complete. So doing tremendous work there and I think they've done a tremendous job of ordering ahead and trying to stay ahead of some of the supply issues.
That's the tour I want, is the EVAC course?
Yeah.
Just saying, I'm available that day.
See if Captain Garden can drive you.
Do we have kind of an org chart put together of who's running the facility then? Not who specifically, but what positions? So ultimately, this new battalion chief will be the top of the, running the facility and making the final decision or how?
No, our, no, sorry for interrupting there. The battalion chief position will be related to operations and will be based in the operations. The EM coordinator position will be a coordinator position that really works with that senior leadership team. So the leadership of metro communications and then the leadership with Sioux Falls PD and Sioux Falls Fire, they will coordinate that and run the day to day. We are still waiting. We do have a contract out with a vendor for that final document for the business plan for the Public Safety Center, and that'll be listed in there.
That would be nice to see, just to have an idea of who's making the say and if it's equal decisions. And someone's got to be that person that makes the final decision. And I got a feeling Chief Toome's got a person or two that he'd like in that position probably as much as you. I appreciate the way you work together.
It does speak to the relationship that we have, that as we talk through, yes, technically an EM coordinator will collaborate very closely with Regan, will be reporting to Regan, who reports through the fire chief. But we were able to talk through that very closely. That is going to be one person in that leadership team. We're very used to the format and emergency management, that you have a unified command. And you bring people of specialty in when they need to make decisions. You collaborate and you work together. And I have no doubt Chief Toome and I will get called when there was a towel left on the elliptical and we can't figure out how to solve that, but I believe we're going to be able to work through some of those issues.
That's okay. His people don't use the elliptical, so that's okay by the time we're done. So. The building. The same thing I've been asking, Chief, you know, starting with Director O'Toole and working my way down to that. Talk about how you're looking to recruit a more diverse workforce than what you have right now. How do we get to that solution? Because I get promises every year that we're talking about it or we're, and we all do. But then we get to the point where we have three people in a, you know, that fills out the plan. And again, I'm not looking for quotas. I'm not looking for a specific number. But I'll tell you what, it would be hard for someone who has English as a second language to apply for any of our positions in the city. It's difficult to get from an economic background to get them into our system. Because we're not either doing, you know, something as simple as bringing people on board. Your cadet program helps that, but if you can't get into the cadet program because you have no background to start with, but it's something that you're interested in and you may want. So whether it's an internship program that looks at incomes in areas of the city or parts of the state, or, you know, a neighbor of mine's on me all the time, why aren't we hiring the hotshot firefighters when they age out at 35? They already have some of the best training in the country. What do we have to do to go get them? If it's money, if it's housing, I know Counselor Sale's done a great job of working with housing for our public service folks. What do you need? Because we want to give it to you.
For fear of sounding a little like an echo chamber, Chief Toome's absolutely right that until we can have the members of our community identify and picture themselves as being a firefighter or a police officer, we do very well when we get members to apply. So we're continuing to try and break down those barriers of how do we do that. Happy to announce that tomorrow is actually the written testing, so the first written testing, entrance testing for fire since August of 2020. So excited, we had 249 members sign up for that testing opportunity. We're excited to see how that plays out as we move forward. We did some different things in working through very specific with the test. We did some different things in working through very specific with the testing company to remove barriers, whether it be travel, whether it be technology, to get people to be able to apply, because when we can get diversity, when we can get members to our, to apply, we tend to do very well. Much like Chief Toomey said, like, we have had some very successful classes there that have done that, so we are looking to move to test more regularly and remove those barriers so that we can. But absolutely, we need to see the eight and 10-year-olds that we're out there, we're doing hydrant parties with, have them identify and see that this is something that I can and want to do, and then court them through that process.
Um, one of the other things, and I didn't ask Chief Toomey this, and I, I meant to, some of the media's been doing stories about public service people who are moving here from other parts of the country. And the focus of the one story I saw talked about, they're moving here because they had difficulties at their last department. Are you seeing that? Or how many people from the time that get that initial application process till they get to be a firefighter and actually at least start a probationary period and, and they're full-time? So.
It, it's tough, and it's one of those lag pieces that we have with where we are at with biannual testing. Like I said, the last time that we had an entrance exam for firefighter was August of 2020. So that's almost an entire world ago, and we think through, and a lot of that great rec, or, um, the great retirement piece has happened and transitioned since then. So this will be really our first foray into that, to see are we getting a more broad net for people that weren't necessarily happy in their previous, whether it's occupation or department. We haven't seen a lot of that. The fire department and the fire career in general has always been kind of a, I don't know if transient is quite the right word, but once somebody has identified that they're interested in joining their professional career fire department occupation, they test generally all over the Midwest or all over the country. So we've seen that as a trend, certainly throughout my entire career, so it might be a little more difficult for me to pick up on that piece, but we're, it'll be interesting to see and track through on this next class that we'll bring in in January.
Do many people go from a volunteer department? Or is that a rural thing? Or is that, hey, I'm, this is my thing, and, you know, I'm coming from a rural department and move up? Or is that?
Yeah, we see a fair amount of testing people that are in the industry and they have interest. We do strive to absolutely be a premier employer with that. So we are a sought-after, sought-after organization, so we see people coming in and striving. It's typically about 50% in any cadet class that we have, whether they have previous fire experience or not. The benefit that we have with the training facility that we have, and certainly the floor we're moving to, and having that extensive training academy, is that we're able to bring in anybody. So I had zero fire experience and zero EMT background when I joined the fire service 20 years ago. We are truly looking to find the best candidates with that right skill set, and then we can bring them onboard and, and train them up to be a firefighter.
Thank you.
Other questions? Chief, I have just a couple. $1.6 million in overtime. At what point do you hire a person instead of paying the overtime?
I very much appreciate that question. Some of that has been led into, we've been doing some trending just recently. I would share that just over $1 million of that overtime budget is contract and FLSA required. So I, I believe it was in 2008, we transitioned away because of FLSA requirements. I'll try not to bore everyone. Anything, we average 56-hour work week. Anything over 53 is required to either get overtime or time off. We transitioned away from time off, and we started to pay that in exchange for time off for holidays. So right over $1 million of that is required by contract, so we're in the neighborhood of $690,000. We did track, had a very good conversation with it, with the administration. The last 18 months has been a little bit of a challenge because of our lag in onboarding. Through COVID and bringing on a new fire station, we have been behind. We've been upwards of 12 to 15 people short in staffing, which has created increased overtime. I have a, a guest out there with as a healthy amount of overtime. If we looked at that we were fully staffed enough that we were at zero, I would consider us to be overstaffed. We're going to have some of those anomalies of long-term injuries, additionally unplanned leave for sick leave and that. So I do preg that somewhere at around one, one to one and a third day per, or shifts per day is something that I would consider to be about a, a healthy average, because those continue to get up and down. So that's just kind of my thought, that we're at presently 690, and it is something that we plan to track very closely moving forward.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. We'll move on to what is going to be our last presentation of the day. Parks Department, Council. We do have an executive session somewhere before our meeting, so just want to bring you up to speed on that. So this will be our last presentation of the day.
Well, good evening, Council. Appreciate the opportunity to present our budget as well. As maybe you know, we've got some big projects in front of us that will be transformative for the park system and really serve our residents for generations to come. So our goal is to try to really highlight those significant changes in 2023, and then give you an idea what you can expect to see in 2023 and beyond. As it relates to our purpose, parks, open space, and trails are really the number-one requested amenity anytime we survey the community. It's been true as long as we've surveyed the community for recreation needs assessments, and that really, really that parkland and open space serves as the foundation of our entire park system. And even though the parks, the parks and open space is really the foundation, it's the recreation programming that really brings it to life, whether it's through our own recreation division or the 70, 80-plus partners that we have out there to help us activate those spaces throughout the city. I'd also, as I was putting this presentation together, I remember a citizen survey that was done several years ago, and they asked, what makes Sioux Falls a special place to live? And the number-one answer that came back was the park system. And the only reason I bring that up is that a lot of the success of the park system rests in this process that we're going through right now, and that's the budget process. And, you know, past councils and administrations and the current council and the current administration are vitally important for us to be able to deliver services. It's not to say that we don't have incredible staff that are extremely committed, but without the tools, we can't do what we do. So just wanted to thank you for your support, and, you know, obviously, this is an important process we're going through. One of the other focuses, as you know, has been a large resource commitment focusing on ESEAB since its discovery back in 2018. And by design, we've been proactively reducing the ash tree population and diversifying the urban forests. And we do this by planting hundreds of new variety of trees, as well as encouraging property owners to plant trees as well through our cost-share program to incentivize them to do just that. A little update on our proactive efforts with your support. Our percentage of ash trees along the street trees back in 2018 was 42%. Pleased to say we've reduced that currently down 19%, down to 29% where we're currently sitting under our EAB management plan. So we're making good progress and right on track. We also wanted to address our aging facilities as part of our 2023 budget. The quality of life bond we've talked about is being a key to making that happen. And then I know we've talked about aquatics a lot, but I also want to remind us about the replacement of the Elmwood Clubhouse and the cart storage facility that burned down a few years back. All these facilities are in that 50-year-old age range and really have reached the end of their useful life. And so, as you know, we'll be launching our community engagement process at the end of this month, where we'll be reaching out to try to figure out what the future of aquatics looks like for us in Sioux Falls. The other thing I wanted to mention is that our focus is also on embracing the river. Our Big Sioux River has gone through various stages of development, or lack thereof, in our city's history. In the beginning, the city didn't really look at the river as an incredibly important asset, that it truly is. In our early days, municipal solid waste contaminants were pushed in the river and, and really was not, again, thought about as a quality asset. In recent history, that's changed with our work to improve the water quality of the Big Sioux River, to clean up and improve the banks of the Big Sioux River with phases one, two, and soon to be three of the downtown River Greenway. These public-private partnerships to redevelop and embrace the river has really improved our appreciation and use of the river in our cities downtown. And then it's also, as you know, driven economic development and activity with projects such as Sharapa Place, the Hilton Garden Inn, the Seal District that's underway, and soon to be underway, Jacobson Plaza Falls Park. And so we're excited to get started on Jacobson Plaza this fall and start Phase Three of the River Greenway later this year, pending final approval from the federal regulatory agencies and Burlington Northern. One of the other things we're working on with this budget is to focus our, on expanding recreational opportunities and experiences. We've got a renewed strategic focus on recreation program offerings, aligning those programs that we're offering with the feedback that we received from the citizen survey. Our focus on delivering programs and activities our residents want and they need. One of our community's top priority was outdoor adventure as it relates to programming. So we've been offering more programming, like archery, birding, and how-to-fish programs. Another top priority that was identified in that survey was adult health and wellness. And so our efforts are to provide more yoga in the parks, providing more fitness programs at the Midco Aquatic Center and other group fitness programs, as well as walk-run events. And those are all examples of how we're trying to meet the needs that were identified as part of our comprehensive plan. So as it relates to our people, it was kind of an interesting little fun fact that Amber or Annis was able to pull together, is that we about, it takes about a half a million hours of work to operate our parks and rec system. And what's also interesting is that about two-thirds of those hours are from our part-time and seasonal staff members. So they're a big portion of what we do out there, and I can't thank Council enough for your past support for wage increases. I can tell you that this is probably the first spring in over a decade we've been completely full-staffed when the summer started, and that's a really good feeling, and obviously we hope to keep it that way going forward. So again, thank you. Speaking of staff, we do have a couple new positions that are proposed for 2023. Ones that, one is a park logistics specialist that will really be focused on the use of technology in our asset management software. This person will assist the department in managing properties we maintain by keeping our assets up to date in the system, so we can take full advantage of that software and that technology. Currently, we have over 300 standing work orders that are auto-generated for our staff. Everything from dumping trashcans to mowing, the list goes on and on, and we're, we're just now starting to scratch the surface of that. And so what's nice about that is that if you're a new employee coming on and you're in a particular role, you, you, you are actually auto-generated work orders that you know that Monday through Friday, this is what needs to be done. So many restrooms need to be cleaned, they need to be checked at the end of the day. You know, it just kind of takes a lot of the guesswork about what needs to be done, and especially valuable for new employees. And it's also extremely valuable for our forestry team. They're probably one of the first parts, parts of our department that's really taken advantage of that, with the EAB removals, all the storm damage that we've had. You know, right now, those happen in real time. If there's a call-in, it gets entered into the system, and if the guys happen to be driving by, they can just stop and take care of it instead of a, go come all the way back to the shop, get a, somebody to hand you a note, say, hey, there's a tree down on Third Avenue, right? So we're able to do that in real time. And then the other nice thing about that is we're able to use that software to be able to track costs in the event there's a disaster declaration and we need to request FEMA reimbursement. The other position is the park technicians. This is our frontline entry-level employee within the department that's going to be able to help us with downtown property maintenance, the downtown parks, the River Greenway, and all the expanded streetscape elements that you see throughout our downtown. And then we also have three part-time maintenance positions that will help us with the growth of the park system. As it relates to our operating budget, there's an $800,000, $860,000 increase for our team. The vast majority of that are the wage increases for the seasonal employees. It includes the two positions I just mentioned, and then the standard steps and colas that all, all city employees operated under, which typically go up year after year. The other thing we do have is a $300,000 increase for support of our partners that are focused on kids and families, that being the zoo management agreement. We've increased that by 10% to support their staffing needs because they also had recruitment challenges with their zookeepers. It also supports the WAMCA Youth Center, which is part of the Sioux Falls for All initiative that was undertaken earlier this year. And then we also have an allowance in there for the Jacobson Management Agreement. You know, the food and beverage piece of things is something that we typically like to contract out. Not knowing exactly how that'll all play out, we'd certainly want to do an RFP so that we have a private vendor in there operating that food and beverage service, and so we have accounted for that in our budget as well. As it relates to taking care of the park system, to start off, the good news is, is we're no longer budgeting for money for, to help support golf course operations. As you guys know, in the most recent report, they're doing very, very well and, and really in, in a, we're in a position now where we no longer need to do that. And then the other thing is, we have some repair and maintenance kind of trends as it relates to our department operations that we're just trying to keep pace with, as well no fuel has gone up, as well as utilities. So it's been modified to adjust for those inflationary increases. As it relates to our capital budget, here are the big moves that you'll see in 2023 and beyond. I'll go, I'll go through these a little bit more in detail, but that is a list that we're really working off of, and that's what you'll see take place next year. This next project, while not specifically in the budget for 2023, I do want to highlight the timeline on the Jacobson Plaza Falls Park. We are currently finalizing design as we speak. We will bid it this fall, and construction will start this fall. And then our plans are to open that facility about winter wonderland time is kind of our target, November of, of 2024, excuse me, 23. The other thing I want to share is that Sioux Falls Skate Park, as you know, we worked with them. We're providing the $800,000 to get that project done. Counselor Jensen, thanks for your support for that project. Appreciate all your efforts there. So we'll design that this fall. We'll bid it this winter, start construction next spring, and hopefully by late fall of, of next year, that skate park will be open. This is an exciting project. It's another leg of the Big Sioux River Greenway Trail. This essentially goes from Lean Park, which is just east of Cliff Avenue. It'll cross underneath 229 and extend all the way to Bonson Avenue. We're currently in design and permitting as it relates to that new trail system. Construction will start in the spring of 2023. We believe it'll largely get accomplished next year, but there may be some remaining work that'll carry over into the following spring. Aquatics, we've talked about that quite a bit. Just, just a shout-out to the community and to council members. If you see folks that have an interest in aquatics, encourage them to participate in those meetings, whether in person or online. Those public meetings will start at the end of this month, and then really want them to help us shape the future of aquatics in Sioux Falls. A lot of city departments I see have talked about the new SLAT team, the Strategic Land Acquisition. That's really going to be beneficial because instead of all of us out working on our own land acquisition, we're all working together on the land acquisition. And not to say that we haven't done that in the past, but this is much more focused effort on that, and I think it'll pay dividends. Park roads and lots, this is another, just kind of a fun fact that a lot of people don't realize, is the number of parking spaces, the number of parking lots that we have across the park system. And the reason I bring that up is that I want you to know that we're also focusing on not just the shiny new objects and the new projects we're, we're launching, but also we're taking care of what we already have. And so with over nearly 11,000 parking spaces and nearly 100 parking lots, we're on a regular cycle of pavement management, much like the street department is with our city streets. The other thing I think is kind of needed, and, and it's going to be very welcome, are two expansions of parking lots where we haven't seen a lot of use on our trailheads. The, the one in the bottom right-hand corner is the old Yankton Trail Bridge Parking Lot Canoe Launch Location. It's always full, it's got trailers in it with people launching canoes, and so we're going to expand that parking lot so there's better circulation, and that's just, it's a great location for folks that like to get on the bike trail. And then the other one is in Legacy Park. It's just on the south side of West 12th Street, near the intersection of Sotoma and West 12th. That parking lot, too, is overflowing. Counselor Nicer, I know you've mentioned that before. It's certainly something that's going to be well-received, to be able to have some additional parking in that area. Reminder about the Elmwood Golf Course Clubhouse, we've already gone through some preliminary design design on that. We've talked to some of the stakeholders already about what that might look like. Again, our intention is to leave the existing clubhouse in place while the new one is being constructed. And so we're excited to be able to get that one rolling as well. And I know Justin, our golf course manager, would like to no longer have to use gas carts with gas prices the way they are. So he'd like to go back to electric. Lions, I know this is not, again, not part of the twenty-three budget, but it is a project that we're going to finalize the design on this fall, bid it this winter, and then start construction next year with the idea that it'll go through construction all of two thousand and twenty-three with a spring of two thousand and twenty-four grand opening. And it'll sound a little different down there once the Lions arrive. And then just finally, kids and families, it's been a focus. You know, it's a pillar of the Sioux Falls framework, and I can't think of another department that probably does more for kids and families than, than we do. And so we're really excited about what two thousand and twenty-three and beyond holds in store for us. And thanks, Amber, and the finance team for helping us get through this, as well as my management team behind me who do a lot of the heavy lifting. So, questions?
Thank you. Questions? Counselor Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Centralized facilities, you and your operating are giving it two hundred and fifty-seven-five. So are they now also taking over the management of your guys' buildings as well?
Uh, somewhat, yes. They're not, I think, I would say they're doing the larger facilities, but like restrooms and some of the bathhouses and those types of things, we're still doing. Tom, if he's still here. Yeah, it's just the main campus.
Okay. Ten-four. Thank you. And then my second question and final question, Lions, how did we come, did we fund that through the Sioux Falls For All or the early CARES money? How did we fund that? And it, there's a big private match on top of that, true?
Yeah. It's an eight million dollar project. I believe our number was one point four million total. And I can't remember if it was CARES or the second wave, but that was, it was in that bucket of money.
Thank you.
You bet.
Other questions? Counselor Starr?
Yes. Thank you, Director. So out of the thirty-seven million roughly, how many new trees do I get? Or does the community get?
Yeah, well,
You know, I've been trying to beat you up on how, you keep telling us how many we're taking down. I want to see how many are going back. We're seeing more and more go up, so.
Yeah, we're, we're trying to do five hundred a year in the park system. And then we're doing more to try to incentivize property owners. We didn't know how it was originally going to go. We said, okay, you're eligible as long as you've had an ash tree removed. Now we're saying anybody that wants one can have one. The, the challenge with the street trees, though, is that there were a lot of trees that were planted in the wrong spots. And so in order for it to now be permitted, you know, it can't be right next to an intersection. It can't be in front of a fire hydrant. You know, it's got to be so far away from the driveway. And so the number of permissible locations is smaller, but we're, again, trying to incentivize all property owners to plant and replant.
Can we go the other direction? Can we look outside of the parking strip and then can we go the whole yard? Or does that stretch our funding?
Typically, we stayed in the public right-of-way and not on private property. And so, but we can certainly come up with other ideas how to incentivize more people to plant trees.
Well, I think we did it with planning and zoning a little bit by requiring, you know, at least one tree in the front yard and requiring it in some other things as part of zoning and new building and, and construction. Because it's, you see it in the new development as fast as we're doing it around town. The last thing you do is have money for landscaping when you're building a new house. And that's five to ten years down the road that is five to ten years of growth. And, and that's what makes Sioux Falls a cool place, is our urban forestry that we have. So whatever we can do to continue to, to plant more trees.
Very good.
Thanks.
Yep.
Counselor Baranco?
Yes. My colleague, Councilman Starr, got, got most of what I was concerned about. I, I share his feelings in that regard. But with the, with the Emerald Ashpour beetles and replacing that, just for people who might be watching television, I've had some, some constituent questions about that. What do people need to do to qualify for that? What's available for homeowners? What are, what are the rules? If you could just go quickly.
Yeah, I'll, I'll let Kelby answer that question for you, because he, he manages that for us.
Sounds great.
You bet.
Good afternoon, Council. Kelby Maris with Parks and Recreation. Just to make sure, Counselor, that I understand your question. It's about the planting permit and what's, what's, what the city is providing for property owners?
And, and cost sharing in particular.
Right, okay. Yeah, so we did develop a cost share program where we will provide fifty dollars for every tree that we would permit. And that's not fifty dollars per property. That's fifty dollars per tree. So if the property has four allowable spots, they would, they would be reimbursed two hundred dollars for the cost of those trees. So the way the voucher system works is we provide them a voucher with their, with their planting permit. The voucher then is turned in at the vendor, and the vendor then sends an invoice to the city, and that's how, how that's taken care of. The fifty dollars is taken off at their, at the place in which that they purchased the tree. We do have contracts available with these vendors to do that. There are twenty trees that are allowable to be planted, twenty different trees that we allow. We, of course, do not allow ash trees. Maples are, of course, are off the list because we're trying to diversify the urban forest, and we've got way too many maples out there. But then, as Director Kearney had mentioned also, there are rules about, you know, how wide the right-of-way needs to be before you can plant a tree, distance from streetlights, fire hydrants, other trees, driveways, and those kind of things, just so that we're making sure that we can put the trees back into place where they will be successful.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Counselor Maricas?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just think in light of time, I'll follow up with you personally and ask some questions real quick. If you could identify in the park master plan equitable access to parks was one of the key goals. Can you just identify real quick the top three areas where you're concerned about equitable access to parks?
Yeah, you know, this is a, you know, everybody's kind of got a different opinion about what they considered equitable access, right? So the city, for the longest time, has had a planning goal of having a park within a half mile of every residence. Doesn't include the commercial areas, the industrial areas, obviously where people don't actually reside. There are other cities that also take into consideration arterial streets and whether or not you have to cross an arterial street to get to a park. And so that can be one of the factors that says, well, technically, you're not meeting that equitable access. And so, for example, the city of Denver has a quarter mile, you know, within every residence, and it doesn't include arterial street crossings. And so it's, it's really just kind of a policy of your city as to what you'd like to see happen. I think what you saw with the Hayward Park project, that was an area we identified as what we called an aquatics desert. It's our own term, nobody else's term. But it was an area where we knew kids were going to have a hard time getting there by themselves. And so by putting that amenity there, we were able to try to improve access and make it more equitable for those residents in that neighborhood for a variety of different reasons. And so I think, I think it's, it's something that we're focused on now more than ever because of the comp plan work that we're doing. But we're also trying to provide more and varied experiences in the different parks so that, you know, every time you go to a park, it isn't the cookie cutter kind of standard park amenities that you would see. And so I'm not sure whether or not I'm answering your question directly, because I think we're still working on that. But it's something that we are certainly striving to do, and it's one of our goals that we identified in our plan is to, to really look at that and really try to spend more time on making sure that we have equitable access to parks.
Thanks.
Counselor Starr?
Yes. Five seconds. Burr oak and cottonwood. Just native species of trees that we need to include in the plan when Mr. Maris was listing off different trees that were available for the plan, so.
Very good.
Other questions, comments? Thank you very much. I'm sure you finished in our top six when we poll on which presentation was the best today. This time, we'll go to public input. If you, anybody would like to have input on any of the subjects we spoke on today?
I make it brief. So you're going to go to executive session here. I told Stacy I'll make it really brief. So we get, let's talk about the police department and their budgeting. I'm glad that this budget was not intense like it was with Burns, where council members had to push to get them body cameras on the police officers. When we talk about diversity, to me, we have growing diversity in there by race, but not enough LGBT in there. Now, do I know some LGBT in that family that's in that police department force? Absolutely. We have Vietnamese, we have blacks, we have whites, we have Ukrainians, and it goes, the list goes on and on and on. We need to start including LGBTQ people. I have talked to some people in the fire department that is in LGBTQ, and they do not feel comfortable in talking about this in their workforce. So we need to break those Christian barriers in, in, within the city that they can come forward and they can, on their off days, go party downtown and don't have to worry about what people think about them. So we have in that issue where we have closet case people within that police and fire department. I'm going to talk about the police department specifically. We do need people to come in and work for that police department force. What I'm leery about is people coming from the other states that are police officers on how they do things and that mentality of Oakland, California, Fresno, California, and maybe Minneapolis, Minnesota, and coming here with that mentality. And I know the Chief Tum is not a dumb person here, but we need to watch very closely on how they're going to adjust and adapt to the cultural of the city and of the state and of the laws here, because the laws are very messed up here, believe it or not. I mean, we're twenty years behind times. I keep saying this. I scratch my head every day because the law, the law ties your hands here. But we have to worry about when we get people in that police department force to worry about the mentality of the people that's coming from other states here that are not used of this kind of, let's laid back versus let's get the baton and start whipping butts here, because that's what they do in other states. Their force is excessive in other states versus here. Here, they're too laid back. So you get somebody from California that is aggressive police department force, and you bring them here, that adjusting mentality here, that's what I'm worried about, is that mentality of adjusting to the department. One more thing is, I'm going to stress again that we need diversity, but we need diversity in that GLBT, and we need to have everybody in city government that can be open with their sexuality and can come and have dinner or something downtown and don't have to worry about, no repercussions and not have to go out of the city. Now, I know personally people that has done this. I know personally people that are closet cases within the fire and the police department. So we need to work on that part of the diversity more than the African-Americans or blacks who even have a native or two or three on that police department force. But we need to, we need to make them feel welcomed here versus using that Christian traditional barriers that we've been having for years and decades here in the city of Sioux Falls and state of South Dakota here. But when we push for diversity on that police department force, we need to worry about those people that are coming in from other states here. Now, I talked to upper management last year, and the Chief Tum is not here. I think they said it was, they keep them, because we talked about accreditation, and they said that they put their people on parole, on probation for eighteen months and not fifteen months. I have to see where that eighteen months came from. And then after that, they can extend their probation period if they feel like they don't, they're not ready for the police department force. But I was told by upper management it was eighteen months. I don't know why Chief Tum said fifteen months. I'm going to have to clarify that. But hopefully they'll go eighteen months instead of fifteen months, because that's what accreditation calls for, is eighteen months for that. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other public input? Seeing none. Counselor Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd make a motion to enter executive session for the purpose of discussing the qualifications, competence, performance, character, or fitness of any public officer or employee or prospective public officer or employee. The term employee does not include any independent contractor pursuant to South Dakota Codified Law one twenty-five-two-one.
Second? Motion second. I got a roll call, please.
Councilmembers Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Marcus?
Yes.
Neitzert?
No.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Motion passed. We'll move into executive session, please. Please clear the room.